Welcome everybody back to the open session of the school committee. We had a retreat previously. And we are now in the regular session.
Now in the regular session.
With that, of the Tuesday, September fourteen, twenty twenty one meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely will be made by roll call vote. And one note to anybody who is joining us, all of us who are wearing masks are in the same room. If folks aren't wearing masks, it's because they're in a different room. Or at their houses or something like that. But that's why everybody is wearing masks or following the policy. So we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance, this is an act of pride from the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we will start with correspondence and Nicole.
All right, the school committee received a series of emailed letters regarding face masks for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year from the following people. Katie Barker on August twenty first, twenty twenty one, with one hundred and four signatures. Josh Benoit on August twenty third, twenty twenty one. Lauren Brady on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Andrea Jason on August twenty second, twenty twenty one. Jeremy Dugan on August twenty third, twenty twenty one. Bernadette DeNervin on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Jessica Hutchins on August twenty third, twenty twenty one, with ninety four signatures. Jessica Hutchins again on August twenty third, twenty twenty one, and September third, twenty twenty one. Jessica Kelly on August nineteenth, twenty twenty one, August twenty sixth, twenty twenty one, and September seventh, twenty twenty one. Douglas Lamont on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, and August twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. Heather Laporte on August nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Rick Roke on August twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Kevin Shaheen on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Ted and Michelle Stagger on August nineteenth, twenty twenty one. School committee also received an email from Ms. Katie Hastings, received on August thirty first, twenty twenty one, requesting the school committee return to in-person meetings. And an email from Nate Moran and Madeline Busolari, received on August, or September fourth, twenty twenty one, regarding the twenty twenty one Long Meadow Pride celebration held on September twelfth, twenty twenty one. An email from Deirdre Cummings of the Massachusetts Public Interest Research Group. And Allison Perrin Drag of the American Heart Association, dated August twenty third, twenty twenty one, regarding safe drinking water in the schools. And finally, an email from Mr. Joseph Mersko, dated September third, twenty twenty one, regarding adding school committee members' phone numbers on the district website.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up, we have a possible motion for approval of minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the August twenty third, twenty twenty one school committee as presented.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? We will go to a roll call vote. Susie.
Yes.
Nicole.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Gianna.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
And yes for me. We are on to visitor comments. And I just want to make a couple of notes before we get to any visitor comments. Number one, just a reminder that visitor comments are made to the committee. And that it is not a discussion. If folks want to pose questions, we may or may not take them up. At some point later on in the meeting or at a subsequent meeting, but it's not a discussion. And also that visitors get one shot at comments and you are limited to around three minutes. And so that's how we've always run this and that's how we're going to continue to do it. And as a reminder, we always welcome feedback, comments by email. So if your remarks are not going to fit in the three-minute window or you have a follow-up, email is the way to do it. So at this point, we welcome any comments from visitors. And if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand, either using the raise hand function or put your camera on and raise your hand. And I will recognize you and then you can make your comment. All right, I see no visitor comments. So we will move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Nicole.
I wanted to take a moment to congratulate the. Sorry, take a moment to congratulate everyone on the first annual Long Meadow Pride celebration that happened this past weekend on Sunday on the town green. It was wonderful to see so many community members out and about. And a big thank you to all of the school community, also families, students and educators. Who all came out as well. Very, very impressive and a lovely event.
Thank you, Nicole. Gianna.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Nicole. It was an amazing celebration. I also wanted to congratulate all of the student athletes and coaches who have returned to athletics. In particular, the, I got a chance to go to the cross-country meet last week. The sun was shining, the breeze was blowing and it was beautiful. Again, as always, the support that the students show for each other, boys, girls, regardless of who's running the race. Is always just inspiring. So thank you to everybody who participated.
Thank you, Gianna. Susie?
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate about the Pride Festival. It was wonderful and thank you for the. It was, thank you for the support from the public schools. I also just wanted to say thank you to all the principals for the smooth opening of school. What appeared to be the smooth opening of school from the community side and it was, I think it's monumental. You know, after last year that we're in a place for in-person learning and it's fantastic. So thank you. Thank you for all you did to make it happen.
Mary.
Last week, I attended the back-to-school night at Long Meadow High School. And this is the first time as a parent, I attended a high school function. So it was really exciting for me to meet my son's teachers. And just to feel the energy of people in the building. The teachers were well-prepared. The building looks beautiful. It was a really well-run night and just a joy to be in school.
Absolutely. Any other comments? All right. We will move on to business with guests. So I don't know if we have any guests. We'll turn it over to Marty for the school health and safety update.
No guests tonight to supplement the school health and safety report. But we can provide some feedback that we collected over the course of the last couple of weeks. And I have just a three-slide. Slide deck I'd like to share with you right now, if that's okay. And at the. Let's see if I can enlarge that for you. I want to start by, we're just talking about some of the feedback that we have received from town health officials. The number of active cases, I think the last I checked stood at around eighteen active cases. Our nurses report that we have six active COVID cases in our student population. There's about a dozen or so students that are quarantining due to COVID, but only a very small number of those relate to in-school exposure. So though we have seen some, some cases popping up in, over the, since school started. It's, it's safe to say that the distancing strategies that we have in place and some of the other mitigation strategies are. Resulting in a different experience this year where I think we're going to see far fewer students having to quarantine. Partly because of the distancing standards, but also because we know that there are categories of individuals that are exempt from. Having to test or quarantine specifically individuals who are vaccinated. Individuals that are distanced at a greater than three-foot distance while masked. And so, you know, those are, that's a standard that we can uphold. And our teachers are reporting that it isn't impacting instruction the way a six-foot standard had in the past. And so our teachers are being very creative with room configurations and with, you know, the movement of students in and around classrooms to ensure that kids have a. A rich, regular experience, but while at the same time observing that, observing that distance standard. So I want to chat a little bit about a couple of things that I know the committee had asked about recent meetings. And so I hope this is helpful information to you. I'll start with vaccination rates. I know this is, again, been a topic of interest among community members. And the committee has asked some questions in the past. And so we wanted to circle back and provide you with the best information that we have. So on the left on this slide deck, you see the mass DPH reports indicating in the aggregate. What we're, what we're seeing for vaccination rates in Long Meadow among twelve- to fifteen-year-olds and sixteen- to nineteen-year-olds. I want to contrast that with the sort of disaggregated information you see on the right on this slide deck, which is information that our nurse leader. Has accessed from the mass immunization database, MIIS system. And so you'll see that in the aggregate with mass DPH, we're seeing some really favorable numbers with regard to vaccination rate. It's important to know that when we, when we break it down by school and by grade level, we're seeing some different results. And there's some really, so I want to make sure that everybody understands the reasons or the differences here. Number one, on the chart on the left, that would include all Long Meadow children, all Long Meadow residents. On the right, it would be just those students that are enrolled in Long Meadow Public Schools. So they'd be students who have graduated or who are attending private school. Whose numbers would not be represented in the, in the vaccination rates on the right. The other thing that we've learned is that, that mass immunization database doesn't necessarily reflect. All the providers, some providers for various reasons might not be dumping vaccination information into that database. And so that's another reason for the, for that difference between the chart on the left and the chart on the right. And then additionally, when folks need to consent, at some point, they need to consent to sharing their information in that. Mass immunization database. And so there might be times where someone is receiving a vaccination, but they haven't necessarily consented to it. And so, excuse me, hadn't consented to sharing the data, important distinction. They haven't consented to sharing the data, so in fact, might not show up in that, in that immunization database. So the, I guess the, the reason I'm showing this. So the rea- I guess the, the reason I'm showing this, um, is just to, you know, because I, I know this is a metric that many people are, um, are watching carefully and we know that the higher the vaccination rates in a, in any community, the greater the protection. And we know that vaccination stands as the single best protection against COVID. But we're trying to do a deep dive into the numbers to understand what our actual vaccination rates are. And we'll come back to this, uh, momentarily when we, we talk about the, um, the response of mass DESI with regard to masking, cause I know that's, that their approach to masking, seems to be tied to that vaccination rate level. So on that topic, um, if, I think it's probably wise for us to kinda keep this on our agenda and to continue to talk about the, the mask requirement. So just the background that everybody knows at this point, the Board of Health ruling, uh, the action by, um, Massachusetts Department of Education. And then subsequently, the school committee's decision to, uh, endorse a universal masking requirement as well. Tonight, later on in your agenda, we'll have an opportunity to review a policy that came out of Policy Sub on, on masking. But I wanted to highlight to this committee and to the community that, uh, the Board of Health has committed to kind of, uh, an ongoing review of the universal mask requirement. And so, uh, with Bronwyn, we had an opportunity to talk to the Chair of the Board of Health earlier this week. And, uh, got a understanding, a sense of, you know, their commitment to regular review of the mask requirement. I would say that, you know, they, they recognize that they have a sort of a, some primacy on this issue that it's, it's, they recognize that as our health leaders in this community that, uh, they have taken on the responsibility of, of, um, reviewing the mask requirement on an ongoing basis. I think what we heard from town officials is that they don't really feel like they'll be sort of tied to any single metric. And so this brings me back to the, the, the DESI announcement back in August where they said that if it would be an opportunity to, to lift that mask mandate if eighty percent of students and staff in a building, uh, were vaccinated. I think what we heard from our Board of Health is that, you know, that's an important indicator for them, but there are a range of indicators that they'll continue to look at to evaluate that, uh, mask mandate that is in place in the, in the town of Long Meadow. So I, I don't know if there's anything you wanna add to that, Bronwyn. Um, I feel like that, that kinda captures what we heard and, and I'm pleased that they're, that they have scheduled a meeting, uh, at the end of September to, to review this and I think this committee really wanted to ensure that we were working in partnership with the Board of Health and my takeaway from our conversations earlier this week is that, that they are similarly committed, that they, they want to continue to stay engaged with, uh, the select board and with this committee. So is that kind of fair assessment, Bronwyn? Is there anything that?
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna add, um, I thought the meeting was very helpful, um, is that Dr. Byowski indicated that they would probably be meeting, they haven't set up meetings yet, but, um, once a month to review, uh, not just the school stuff, but all the town stuff, but the stool, school stuff included. So, um, I just thought that was important for people to know.
Well, you know, again, similar to, to last year that we, we know that none of these mitigation strategies should, you know, uh, ever be etched in stone and that we, we want to regularly review our strategies in response to the latest public health information. So, uh, that seemed to be the commitment. Uh, DESI again has announced that there's a possibility that they would turn this decision back to localities, at least their approach to the decision, that they'd turn it back to localities on October first. Here we are, September fourteenth. Haven't really heard any strong indication that that's going to happen. It, it may, but, uh, there hadn't been any formal announcements. But I'm surprised, you know, that, that DESI hasn't taken a stronger stand about what that October first deadline means. And, excuse me, how districts would determine whether or not they hit that eighty percent threshold. The, the discrepancy that we talked about earlier is something that I had a opportunity to ask the Commissioner at a meeting last week. And, uh, he, he basically confirmed that across the state, they're, they're trying to figure out a way to, really accurately assess what percentage of staff and students in a building are vaccinated. So that's something that, you know, we're told, we will get some additional information and guidance on. If, if that becomes, if that continues to be an, an important metric for us, so, um, I'll stop there, cause I just wanna touch on the testing shortly too, but I don't know if the committee has any questions on that.
Uh, let's do Jamie and then Suzie.
Yeah, mine isn't a question, uh, mine's just more around urging the committee. They continue to look at this six-feet guideline that we've put out there. I know there's a lot of different information out there. But I drive around a lot of kids from every school in this district, kids eating in a stairwell, kids eating in a hallway, kids not eating with their friends. I, I, I don't think it's good for their social well-being. Um, I think we're, we made a decision there that has as much negative impacts as positives, especially if they're gonna be sitting with a mask on while, while they, while they have lunch and they're adequately spaced, whatever we decide. But the fact, if you look around these buildings that we have and a couple of them told me they've sat on a stairwell by themselves. I mean, you gotta, you, we made decisions and I don't think we know the reality of those decisions. I don't think that's right. And this kid did not think it was right because he was pretty sad. He couldn't sit with his friends. So there is some negative effects of this, you know, with regards to the spacing, especially around lunch that is like, that was like your favorite time as a kid, that it's being completely taken away from them. Um, so I, I just urge everybody to keep looking at that and just don't assume, cause we're making a decision that we think is right. It doesn't have negative consequences for many of the children that, um, I'm hearing that is out there. So let's just not ignore it. It's my, just two cents on it.
Thank you, Jamie. Suzie?
Um, I don't know if Marty wants to, is there a response?
Yeah, I, I think, um, so Jamie's correct that at lunchtime, K eight, uh, pre-K, we have the students spaced at six feet. Uh, at the high school, that's not possible. So they're inside six feet at the high school. My, my hope is that, um, all kids have a adequate place to sit. And if that's not the case, then the obligation is on us to, to make that happen. And so if there, you know, any, any reports that families have or parents have or anybody has concerns about that, you know, we, we definitely would wanna address that as best we can. The, the rationale is that if children are eating lunch inside of six feet and there's a COVID positive case, it would result in these children, especially at the elementary level where they're unvaccinated, it would result in them having to quarantine. So I guess I, I recognize, I think Jamie's right, that there's a, you know, there's a downside to that arrangement. We would love kids to be shoulder to shoulder at lunch, but the, uh, the other potential downside is that it would result in a number of students being deemed to be close contacts and having to quarantine. And we've already had, you know, our, the, the contact tracing work is already starting to ramp up. We are starting, we are seeing cases and, you know, one positive case in one school at lunch, if they were inside of six feet, it would kick out, you know, everybody in that, in a radius of that child and, 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 you know, they, they would have to quarantine at home. So, yeah, I think, you know, I will totally agree that it's something that we should regularly review. And if the numbers are on our side and this, the health indicators are pointing in the right direction, then we could reconsider that six-foot standard at lunch, K eight.
And Marty, just quickly, are all of the schools trying to let the kids eat outside as much as possible?
As much as possible, yeah. Uh, picnic tables and tents and, um, um, and so maybe can shed some more light on that, on, on where we are with that. But as much as possible, we, we're, we're having the kids eat outdoors where we can be, you know, a little bit more relaxed in, in the way that the kids are situated and distanced. Weather permitting.
So I'm gonna go back to Suzie.
Thank you for that explanation, obviously, but yeah, that's, we, we certainly don't want the unintended consequences to be isolation, obviously. Um, so thank you for sharing that and thank you, Jamie, for bringing it up. Um, I did also just wanna clarify, because I think in our last meeting, you know, we, we had a vote on the pre-K and I just wanted to clarify some information from the state level because E E C, um, does, uh, oversee the, um, pre-K, um, uh, the pre-K in terms of any, um, mitigation strategies around masking. And so on September seventh, I believe, they, um, did, uh, put in a universal masking mandate for, um, learners, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that that was shared publicly.
Bronwyn, go ahead.
Uh, I was just curious, what age did they start that at? Marty, do you know?
I'd have to do some homework on that for you, Bronwyn. Not sure off the top of my head.
I thought it said, uh, five, but.
The, the DESI requirement was five and older. I believe the E E C, uh, guidance stretched down into preschool. I don't know if there was an age cutoff. I could do some homework on that for you.
Okay, can I ask a follow-up question too to the lunch matter? Uh, do you think that's something we could ask, um, the Board of Health? Um, only I know that they've already made the really big decision about the masks and I don't wanna bombard them with questions. But I do think that's one that's worth getting their opinion and feedback on. And I, I, I understand about people being quarantined and, and that would be obviously not ideal. But also to hear that students are sad and that is a time they usually look forward to, that's difficult to, to think about as well. So I just didn't know if that was something we could ask them and maybe they could discuss it at their upcoming meeting?
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Um, Marty, I'm curious. You mentioned we have about a dozen or so students in quarantine. And I know we had talked about this at the last meeting, but sort of the reach-out process, how are we engaging those learners at home?
So the expectation at this point is that, um, students would stay connected to the classroom via Google Classroom. And so that in addition to posting sort of your typical homework assignments on Google Classroom, that teachers would take the additional step of posting the daily classroom work. So if there's, if there's a video that the students have watched or there's a, a PowerPoint or there's a handout or a reading, uh, that students would be able to access it, it that way as well. I think we'll have to watch, uh, the numbers. A lot of the quarantining, most of the twelve that I mentioned, it was for out-of-school exposure. I think if we start to see the numbers tick up, you know, that's something that we'll have to continually review as well. There are, um, you know, again, we'll, we'll see fewer students quarantining because of the, the fact that if you're outside of three feet or asymptomatic and vaccinated, that you, you don't have to quarantine. But, uh, that's something that, you know, we'll, we'll continue to gather feedback on. And if the numbers of students in quarantine start to tick up, then we might have to, you know, come up with some different solutions.
Um, yes, because I think even if they did not become infected in school, I don't really think that that's the issue. I think that the time out of school can be really challenging. And again, I know I said this before, but even a day or two for some kids is a, is a really big deal. Um, and I'm wondering if there is any interaction that we can encourage between, I mean, phone calls or a Google Meet with those kids who are out for an extended time period. So I just wanted to say that one more time.
It, it wouldn't, the approach wouldn't preclude staff from doing a little Zoom check-in, you know, at, at, uh, off-class hours. And so I suspect that, I, I know that's happened in some cases already. Uh, the other thing I think that we could think about is, you know, could we, again, if the numbers tick up, would we need to designate some staff, perhaps hire some staff, tutors, to serve as a liaison to do those daily check-ins to, to kids who are quarantined?
Yeah, I think some kind of protocol would be important because some teachers might do that, but not all teachers.
Gianna?
Yeah, just as a, and Mary, thanks for bringing that up again, just as a follow-up that, um, you know, beyond the check-in and beyond the access to the Google, um, I, I'm thinking about the instructional piece that they're missing. So a, a check-in, so I'm glad to hear you say possible, you know, tutors, cause I was thinking, you know, I think the National Honor Society, don't they have tutors that'll be starting to get set up? And, um, that I, I think, you know, check-in is great, how are you doing, you know? Um, maybe they would do, do you have any questions about the, the materials? But I think, you know, that component of the actual instruction of what they're supposed to be, you know, doing, um, is, is important as well.
Marty, before you go on to the testing, do you mind going back to the numbers for, yeah, for vaccination? And, and I just wanna make sure that everybody's understanding these and that I'm understanding these correctly. So based on what you said, this is just the students in those grades, so not employees in those buildings.
Correct.
And the numbers that we're seeing there, that's pretty much the floor of the percent vaccinated. So we're at least that percent vaccinated, likely some percent higher because of the reasons that you mentioned.
Yes.
So the challenge now is to actually get an accurate representation of what the vaccination numbers are. And, and how do we stand, um, in terms of understanding the percent vaccination of the staff in those buildings?
At this stage, uh, staff have voluntarily submitted evidence of vaccination. And, uh, the incentive to do that is to, you know, so that they potentially could easily be exempted from quarantine if they were a close contact. And so, uh, the evidence is, is rolling in, uh, HR is collecting that information for us right now. It is the percentage of folks that have submitted vaccination documentation to HR is sort of well below the, you know, what we're seeing for at least Long Meadow adults here. So it could be just a, a lag in terms of submitting that documentation. I, I'm, I'm confident that the actual percentage of vaccinated staff is far higher than what we've seen in terms of the, vaccination documentation that's been submitted.
So essentially, we're gonna look forward to seeing charts like this at upcoming meetings that hopefully will have a better representation of reality for our students and our staff.
Well, like, you know, uh, our, our nurse leader dives into the M I I S system pretty regularly just to, uh, understand what, you know, what percentage of students are vaccinated. And so, um, it's, each time she gets into the system and pulls the records, the percentages creep up. And sort of in the way you described, so.
Bronwyn.
Um, I just wanted to bring up only so that the, we don't have to, Marty doesn't have to go searching for it and the public is aware that, um, the mask requirement for early childhood is adults and students five and older have to wear masks if they're in early childhood, but, and it's strongly encouraged for, uh, four and under. And I believe also they have to wear it on the the bus, it says. Just to make it clear for people watching and so we don't have to come back to it next time. Thanks.
Other comments or questions before Marty moves on to the screening and testing? All right.
So the uh, I think the the committee and the community have seen uh the emails that have gone out to families uh explaining the screening and diagnostic testing that uh that we will be involved with. At this stage, we are uh collecting consent forms from families. Uh, I I don't have in front of me any information on sort of what percentage of families have consented. Um, that's a available on a portal that we'll have to access separately. Uh, I think there's a lot of interest in it, uh, which is encouraging. And as a reminder, we uh are looking at the two testing options on the left of this chart, symptomatic testing and the and the test and stay testing. And so the symptomatic testing is for when individuals are at school and they're, they have some mild symptoms. Uh, and they would have access to that binax now rapid antigen test. The uh, if they test negative, then um and their symptoms continue to be mild, they they would be allowed to stay. And then similarly with the test and stay, um, it would be if an individual has been identified as a close contact, they could take the the test would be administered for five uh, five consecutive days and the day of exposure. And assuming negative tests and assuming that individuals aren't symptomatic, they would be permitted to stay. So uh, the tests have uh, the test kits have arrived, the consent forms are rolling in. It will still be a couple of weeks at least before we get this off the ground. There's a fair amount of training uh that needs to happen. And we also have to sort of pin down protocols associated with uh logging and tracking the tests and then communicating um back and forth with parents on the testing program. So um, there's still some heavy lifting going on. We're anxious to get it up and running as soon as possible. And I think this is, you know, another way that we'll be able to, you know, avoid children having to quarantine and keep them in school, you know, again, the overarching goal. So um, I don't know if the committee has any questions or feedback. My my sense is that like, is that we would start with the test and stay. That seems to be the most critical component. And that um, once we have our legs under us with that, that we would move to the uh the symptomatic screening. Our, you know, admittedly, um, our health offices are busy, busy places. Um, they're far busier nowadays than they were when I was teaching, frankly. Um, the 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 needs that children present in school, uh, and the requirements and our nurses are greater than ever. So we have to be careful, you know, we we wanna be very judicious about uh kind of identifying situations and circumstances under which a child would experience that or have access to that symptomatic testing. So that's that's another thing that's sort of under review right now and that that we will um sort of pin down the parameters of.
Brownman?
Uh, Marty, can you just give me some clarification on the, is the binax now rapid antigen test the one that um people get a little bit concerned about because of the false positives? Is that why we were?
The PCR test.
Okay.
Is the most is the most reliable.
Oh, okay.
So this is, this is less, in fact, less reliable than the, the binax now testing is in fact less reliable. What, when I've asked that question, the explanation is that, you know, school settings tend to be more stable, tend to be less likely to see spread. And so that if we have close contact situations in school, that we can have a higher degree of confidence that there's no spread in school because it is such a controlled environment.
So I guess my question is, if a student uh had the binax now rapid antigen test and it came back positive, they would normally um have to quarantine, right? Not a close contact, just like a positive test.
Meaning if a family did an over-the-counter.
No, no, at school.
At school. At school, if they received a positive binax result.
Right.
It would cause them to have to go home. And I would have to do again, probably some homework for you on what the return to school protocol would be from that point forward. I don't know if Mr. Mazza is is as versed in this as I am, but I think I'd wanna know what what happens if they get a positive on the binax. What they're, what happens, how they, what the return to school protocol would be.
My recollection is they do have to quarantine and go for a PCR test.
Okay.
Depending upon the results of that test would then dictate.
Okay.
Their return to school.
That's what I was just wondering, um, because that one's much more reliable, so uh, that sounds like a good plan. Thanks. I just want a clarification. I couldn't remember which test was which. And um, just in case there was a false positive, um, I'm glad if they did get the um, the other test, they could come back if it was negative. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Uh, just a final thing, Marty, thank you to to you and and all the staff who are working on making that testing possible. I I agree that I think it's really important that we have that as an option. So thanks to everybody who's putting in that hard work. All right, uh, we are moving on to administrative reports. Marty?
Uh, some of what the committee shared earlier, I just would want to echo the uh pride celebration of the weekend. I'm so appreciative of staff members that uh that participated. Our reality clubs from the two middle schools and the high school represented. Uh, three of our teachers were featured speakers at the event. And uh, we really appreciated the chance to to partner with the with the organizers of the event. And kudos to them for um pulling together a very much a student, a child-focused and family-focused event. I I thought it was just a perfect way to uh spend a a weekend afternoon. So congratulations to the organizers and it was great to see so many committee members uh turn up and support as well. So that's it.
Thank you, Marty. Um, chair report. Uh, I don't really have much to say other than, you know, it really is wonderful to see all of our kids back in school, to see the kids biking, parents with their jogging strollers and bikes. Uh, and I just wanna thank the the families for making this possible, uh, for keeping their kids home if they have symptoms and being sick and just being really responsible. I think it's a huge community effort and and it seems like everybody's doing the right thing. And just thanks to everybody and and again, thanks to all the staff for for making it all work. And and the final thanks is to, you know, thank everybody for the the retreat that we just had before this meeting. We we got together with the admin team, including the principals. And I just wanna thank committee members and staff for taking their valuable time to meet. It was really wonderful for us to have some conversation uh in a broader group and and really talk about the goals of the committee, the goals of the administrators. And um, you know, just feel really lucky that we have a committee and an admin team that works so well together. So thank you to everybody for that. Um, yeah, I guess the final thing, as I continue to say every week, you haven't gotten vaccinated, haven't gotten your kid vaccinated and they're eligible, please do it because that's gonna help us keep the kids in school and uh keep everybody where we want them to be. All right, uh, Dagan, student representative. All right, so we're gonna move Dagan down just a bit. Oh, wait, he's he's coming back in.
All right, can everyone hear me okay? Cool. All right, so you guys haven't seen me since the opening of school. So as you guys touched on at the beginning of the meeting, thank you very much for all your hard work over the last year to get the student body of LHS whom I represent. And I mean, I have siblings in both a middle school and the elementary school level. So we thank you very much for your hard work and due diligence to get us back in school. Anything as bad as Zoom classes, I can tell you, I literally just got booted off. It was not so much fun. Um, the next thing I wanna touch on is sports. Um, obviously, fall sports are in full swing at LHS. We are, I believe the statistic is about eve, over eighty-five percent of LHS um student body participates in sports. Um, so just as we talked about cross-country, football's in full swing, field hockey just had a game. Uh, we thank you guys very much for allowing us to follow MIAA guidelines when we don't have to wear masks outside, when we're playing sports, believe me. I was a spring sport athlete wearing a mask outside in that heat was absolute hell. Thank you very much for that. And finally, lunch at LHS, that was spoken about earlier. Jamie's not wrong. Uh, and you guys were literally just in the caf hours ago, so you obviously saw the setup going into that room. Um, I am aware that my administration at LHS is doing all that they can to ensure that students are safe because that is the main priority of this legislative body is to make sure that our students in our, all of our schools are safe. However, Jamie did make a good point about the the negative repercussions of what we're doing here. I personally get to see this every day. Sadly, I have to see this every day. Uh, I see students literally booking it, which means sprinting from their class to the lunchroom to make sure they get a seat in the lunch tables, which are the tables with the red dots, actually in the true cafeteria, rather than being, I would say, outcasted to under the, under the staircase, around the, around the auditorium or in the hallway leading up towards the guidance office like you guys all probably had to walk through today. Um, I'm, and LHS, the guidance department, the administration, mostly our staff, lo- love to preach about, you know, positive mental health for our students as it is a big priority. If you have students who are in high school, high school is extremely stressful. As you can, as you can see, I'm keeping it together perfectly. Oh, it's so great. I mean, but as a three-sport athlete, a, you know, how holding leadership positions in three different organizations, including this one, and being a National Honor Society qualified um student, it's a lot. And not being able to talk to your friends and having to sit in at a seat alone in the middle of a hallway, right next to the guidance, getting, you know, getting a pat on the back from Mr. Roslin saying it's gonna be okay, which is great. But if there's anything we can do to continue to work on now, I know Marty, you spoke about, um, we will reach, hopefully, we will reach that number eventually. Hopefully, October first rolls around, things can be um relaxed. And I really hope that becomes true. But if we can work on some way with the LHS administration to find some way to create a more social aspect. Because I, as a, as a leader in my school, I hate to see my constituents, my people, sitting alone with a frown on their face at one of the most social and amped-up times of the day because I have the good fortune of being faster than some people that I can actually run to lunch. But not everyone has that ability. So I just wanted to make note of that since Jamie spoke about it and, you know, just see what we can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dagan. Um, Marty, do you wanna share what we were hearing about while we were uh eating outside today from Mr. Landers? Right, I I feel like he was talking about how we're hoping to get some more picnic tables and and make it possible for more kids to eat outside. That doesn't help if it's raining or freezing cold. But I I think one of the things we heard from Mr. Landers was that those outside tables are prime seating and there's not enough of them. And it sounded to us like if we got more of those tables, it would be more social, more normal lunch. So I'm just curious, Dagan, do you do you think like that is at least a partial solution to the issue that you're talking about, more outside seating for lunch?
Yeah, so I can talk about that. So more outside seating is obviously great. That mean people can be closer together outside, you know, things can be done. As it stands right now, the outside seating, as it is very limited, there are, I don't know, you guys are out there, I'll call it like eight tables, six tables. Slightly kind of a senior privilege, you get to see it outside with the usual back in the day before COVID and still seems to stay that way now. So more outside seating is definitely another way. Hopefully, that outside seating can co- compensate for the students sitting outside of the regular cafeteria and so we can get rid of those seats, moving them outside, creating that social aspect and fixing our problems. So I find that a very, very good solution.
Thank you for the feedback. Uh, Gianna?
Thank you, Dagan, for your personal experience and and thoughts on that. Uh, Superintendent, do we have any, or maybe, uh, Mr. Mazza, do we have any um funding, you know, to maybe look into, you know, those those three-feet-clear partitions that go on the tables? Did we ever do that at the high school level? And would that be a possibility in terms of
Yeah.
lessening the?
The prevailing wisdom on on the plexiglass dividers is that they inhibit airflow and that they require a lot of surface cleaning and so that they can be counterproductive. And and also, we had heard from students that they felt sort of, even though it was clear and they could talk through it, they felt kind of boxed in. And so we we wanted to remove that sort of institutional feel. Yeah, I, if any, you know, I I would, I just wanna be careful about the picture of the cafeteria at the high school that we're painting for folks who are watching at home. We we do have, uh, students are seated inside of six feet, um, four feet. Um, it's not a terribly unreasonable distance. I think that I'm probably more concerned K eight, if we if we have some opportunity, K eight to um bring kids inside of six feet at lunch, I'd be interested in that. But there are some desks that are stretched out along the hallway outside of guidance. But the great majority, almost all students are in the cafeteria at the tables. They they've sort of, um, they're at the, at the old traditional tables. Last year, we had individual student desks spaced six feet apart. It it frankly was a very institutional feel last year. This year, they have the tables back. Not every seat at every table is able to be used, but the tables are back and then we've expanded outdoor seating. You know, as as Kevin said, we'd love to see more. We have more than eight tables. Um, and Mr. Landers has plans to obtain additional outdoor seating, picnic tables. So, you know, we're, let's remember, part of, we're we're only a couple of weeks into school. And it's really important to get started, to establish some safe protocols. It's easier to be less restrictive once you have some protocols in place. I don't think it would have been wise to start the year with students seated inside of six feet at the elementary level or for us to have our old traditional arrangements at the high school. I can tell you right now that some of the cases that we've seen already pop this year would have resulted in students having to be quarantined at home. And so we have to be very, very careful about that. And I would just ask for everyone's patience on this. Let's see what happens over the next few weeks. And let's see if we have an opportunity to rearrange the cafeteria seating to make it a better experience for kids. But, you know, as I've always said, schools are joyful places, a lot of fun. Uh, what I've seen since I've been here is a lot of kids laughing and enjoying themselves at lunch. And I just wanna be careful about, you know, i- it does it, is it ideal? No. Is it what we need to do right now at this point in the year just to ensure that we're not quarantining students before we get test and stay up and running? It it is, sadly. And so that's the reality um that that we're dealing with in school. Our job is to keep children in school. And I don't wanna set up any distancing arrangements that result in children having to be quarantined and learning, you know, in some way that's less than acceptable to all of us. So I just ask for everybody's patience on that and give us an opportunity to get our legs under us, establish our routines. It's still early in the school year. We're committed to always looking at this, reevaluating, looking for ways that we can safely make it less restrictive. So that's our commitment. It it was our commitment last year. It will be our commitment this year as well.
Thanks, Marty. Uh, let's move on to other reports, so LPVEC. And Mary, is that you?
Yes, it is. Uh, so the group met on August twenty-fifth. Um, just to recap, we reviewed our masking procedures and medication distribution procedures. At the superintendent level, there are some conversations happening um regarding hiring a diversity coordinator who would be um looking at diversity. a diversity coordinator who would be, um, looking at diversity, equity and inclusion for our LPVEC students. I was really excited about that because it supports the work that we're doing on equity inclusion in Long Meadow. Um, so I'm, look forward to hearing more about that. I don't have a lot of details yet. Um, the annual special education program review, there were some minor updates to policies, uh, student conduct and behavior and bullying prevention and intervention. And again, those were minor, um, more wordsmithing. Uh, we did have some recent grant funding that was awarded. Uh, the special education summer school grant was a competitive grant. Um, it was for forty-nine thousand dollars and we did receive that. The program was very successful. And also our yearly Perkins grant was two hundred twelve thousand dollars. Um, there are some changes in the municipal reimbursement program, some restructuring based on a retirement. Um, and so this led to some restructuring of that department and we've talked about that a lot. Um, there were some also some changes to the salary schedules. Um, and basically these changes were made to result in a more consistent schedule of increases. Um, also they recently completed some construction projects. There's a repaired bistro roof and renovations to the portable classrooms that house the Tween Elementary Program. And lastly, we approved appropriations from fund balances. There is another meeting tomorrow. Um, we will hear our opening of school update because of course this meeting took place right before school started. So this update is sort of a month old. Um, and we'll also be talking about some financial reports and capital projects.
Thanks, Mary. Any comments or questions? All right. Uh, energy and sustainability, I do not have a report for you at this meeting. Uh, open space, Jamie?
Yep. So the final report was published and I believe Marty or Diane were gonna circulate it or already have. Um, I highly recommend everybody taking a read of it, um, so and going through it. And then we can report out and talk about anything as it relates to effects on schools and school related, uh, um, areas and grounds and whatnot. Um, so I think it's gonna be very limited, but, um, I had to recommend everybody taking a quick read of it.
Thanks, Jamie. And, and I want to just, you know, on behalf of the committee, thank everybody involved in that group. I know how much work folks put in and how important that work is. Um, i- is there anything, Jamie, in particular you want to highlight or, um, really it's just take a look at our leisure and if there are questions, bring it up at a subsequent meeting?
Yep, absolutely. If there's any questions from subsequent meetings, you'll see within there, there, there's definitely slight impacts to school and school grounds, but nothing that's really, um, substantial as it relates to our school facilities. But I highly recommend taking a look at it. It's a lot of wonderful things and I agree. A lot of people put a lot of time and energy into it.
Thanks, Jamie. All right. Um, Gianna, SEAL.
Thank you, Kevin. And, uh, Kevin and Superintendent, I just wanted to thank you both for allowing, um, the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow to have a, a report out at our meetings. I think it's super valuable to, you know, for us here on the committee and, and the administrators, um, to just stay updated on, on the activities of SEAL. Um, but I also think it's, it's critical to the work that we're doing in terms of, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion, tolerance, um, understanding differences, different learners, uh, that we all as a community, a whole school community understand and appreciate, you know, the, the the special needs and special services, but also the special talents and contributions that, um, you know, those students and, and, and their families contribute to the LPS community. I would also, I know that Megan Downey is here. I know that she's going to, to present, um, a, a short presentation on SEAL. Um, but I would also just encourage people to understand um, and, and to not be afraid to engage with SEAL, even if you don't have a child, um, that may require special services. Uh, the beauty of SEAL is that, you know, again, we want the whole community to be aware of, of the efforts. Um, and there might be something that you could bring to that table. Again, even if you don't have a child who receives special services, that you could be doing or offering to help support the efforts of SEAL and, and, and especially the students who, um, are part of those, those families. So Megan, thank you so much for being here. And Superintendent, can you pull up her slides?
Please. Thank you very much for having us. And Gianna, thank you very much for representing, um, SEAL tonight and asking for, um, a few minutes of everyone's time. Um, we gave a presentation last year at the school committee and once again, we're just wanted to enforce, um, that the SEAL, um, has a new website. Our website unfortunately crashed last year and we were unable to recover it. So we made a new website. Um, as you can see, this is what it looks like now. Um, the SEAL mission, if you can go to the next site, once again, is the Parents Advisory Council that offers information, support and networking opportunities to parents. It's charged by Massachusetts State Law to collaborate with the school committee and, um, to provide, to provide advice to the Long Meadow, uh, Long Meadow School District regarding the planning, development and valuation of the special ed programs and policies. Um, we are gonna meet every Wednesday night or every month this year on Wednesday nights via Zoom. So there's no conflict with school committee meetings, um, as we've had in the past, and hopefully that will help our numbers. We have seen the same people over the last few years, even though there are an increased numbers of special ed, or students receiving special education, um, assistance in school, whether it be an IEP or a five oh four. Um, so we're hoping that changing it to Wednesday nights would make it more accessible and convenient by Zoom as well. Um, on the next slide, um, on our webpage, um, we have a new chat feature that we're hoping that people would feel comfortable. Um, that's my email. Um, but anyway, we were testing it out. It goes directly to, um, Diane Portfolio's phone. She, we ask people twenty-four hours, but it allows people to anonymously, anonymously, um, ask questions, get involved, um, use us as a resource because we know that there are families out there that, um, may not feel comfortable or don't have time to come to our meetings. But, um, they may have questions that we can provide assistance. Um, and just the last, I think we have two slides. The last, um, the next to last slide is the calendar for this year. Um, we are having a meet and greet on the September twenty-fifth, um, at Greenwood at eleven AM, which is the next, um, slide. It is a flyer. The link is on our website and also we sent it out last night, um, via email and it's a free event. Um, we're just asking people to register so we can, um, anticipate how many people are gonna come. But we do have the monthly schedule up on our website. Um, we have meetings that, um, are required, um, going by the bylaws, um, to review IEPs. And, um, I encourage everyone to spread the news, um, because it provides information about IEPs, five oh fours, um, special ed rights, um, for parents and students, um, and leads to lots of discussions.
Thank you, Megan. We appreciate you joining us. Uh, are there any comments or questions for Megan? Well, thank you so much for joining us. Thank you for all that you and SEAL do. Um, we all know how important your work is and, and we really appreciate everything you're doing for the community and, and for our kids. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you to everyone as well.
Marty, go ahead.
Uh, so again, yeah, thank you, Megan, uh, for joining us and Gianna for facilitating, uh, Megan's appearance. Um, I'm happy to hear that, uh, you're, you're able to schedule on Wednesday nights. That's, uh, that's great for this committee and, uh, I think it will, um, help with accessibility. Uh, Megan, I'm happy to send out some information on, uh, the upcoming meet and greet and
Thank you.
your mission and your calendar. So, um, I have the information. We'll, we'll push that out via email and post it on our website as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, and if anybody of course had ideas or, um, suggestions on how to get more parents involved or, um, in maybe meeting information or what we can provide more information on to get more people to be involved, please reach out to Diana, um, or myself or Gianna. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
All right. Um, we are now on to subcommittee reports. Um, and the finance subcommittee is going to ask to table all of their business because our meeting is going to happen next Tuesday. We just were unable to meet this week. And so we're gonna meet a week from today. And so the finance, uh, subcommittee items will come up at our next meeting. So that brings us to the policy subcommittee. Um, who's gonna take that one?
All right. Thank you. So, uh, policy sub, uh, rolled up his sleeves and, uh, reviewed our prior face mask policy and considered how it could be updated in light of the, uh, the most recent Board of Health vote and school committee vote. And so in your packet is some, uh, suggested revisions to policy, uh, E B C F A. Uh, draw your attention to a, a paragraph, um, on the backside of your handout, which describes the, um, work that school administrators would do to enforce the policy. That is language that, uh, was given to us by our council or legal council at Murphy, Hesse, Tumi and Lehane. And so feel confident that, that's, uh, that's, that will help us uh, enforce the, the mask requirement with, with care and compassion and diligence. And so I think we're happy to answer any questions that you might have, but this policy comes to you, recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Thank you, Marty, and thanks to the policy subcommittee for working on this. Uh, comments or questions for Marty and/or the subcommittee? All right. So since there's no discussion, I think we have a possible motion.
I'm, I move on the recommendation, sorry, I move on the recommendation of the policy subcommittee that the school committee approve policy E B C F A as amended and waive the thirty-day posting requirement of policy B G B, policy adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
There any discussion? All right, we'll go to a roll call vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me. All right. Uh, looks like that's it from policy subcommittee. We have no report from the curriculum or the evaluation subcommittee. We have no ongoing business, no new business. And it looks like we have a motion for an executive session.
I move that the school committee meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with Unit A, bargaining with non-unit personnel, Director of Pupil Services, and Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me. And again, we are going to go into executive session, but then come back out into open session. Thank you to everybody for joining us and we are now into executive session. Like to welcome everybody back to the school committee meeting, they're back in open session. Uh and we have some motions that Suzie is going to lead us through, so Suzie, I'll turn number two.
Thank you. I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement between the Long Meadow School Committee and the Long Meadow Education Association, Unit A, dated September 14th, 2021, to add a course section in eighth grade social studies, and I authorize the and authorize the chair to sign it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Gianna? Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me. Uh next motion, Suzie?
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement between the Long Meadow School Committee and the Long Meadow Education Association, Unit A, dated September 14th, 2021, regarding a teacher covering a virtual middle school foreign language class, and authorize the chair to sign it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me, and we have one more motion from Suzie.
I move that the school committee approve the contract addendum to the Director of Pupil Services, Pupil Services uh contract dated July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, and authorize the chair to sign it.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Move to a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me. And now we have a poss- possible motion for adjournment.
I move that the school committee adjourn the September 14th, 2021
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you to everyone for joining us, and we will see you in two weeks. Good night.